What's that?
All set, Vince.
Uh, that's one and the same, one runs into the other, so. Okay, he's ready. All right. Good evening. We have a large crowd, but the room is going to tip this way because you all chose to sit on top of each other over there. Welcome to the, and that, it's all good, to the March 2022 Orange Board of Selectmen meeting. For those of you in the audience, on your left, my right, if there were an emergency, you would use that stairway where I think everybody came down, which will put you out to the rear parking lot. If for some reason, some of you chose a different route, you could go straight down the hallway to the back and up the stairs puts you to the fire department, or up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors and we'll put you out in front of the town hall. Any of those three are your thing. And turn your phones off, please. It's okay, relax. Look at her, she's yelling at him. Yeah, that's right. With that said, all right, there's Vincent. All right, while he's getting ready, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start on my right down there with introductions tonight. Remember your microphone.
P.J. Shanley.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Dan Denny, Secretary to the Board.
It's Moreno Town Attorney.
Good evening, Ralph Okenquist.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Okay. Public participation. Public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow two minutes per speaker for any topic. Is there anybody in the audience for public participation? Two minutes.
We got ten items tonight, so be quick.
That's not the issue.
For those of you that do not know me, Tom Pizzano, 523 Fairway Road, Orange, Connecticut. Most of the people that watch me on Oh, Gat, know, see me in a referee outfit refereeing Orange soccer. One of the things I like to bring to everyone's attention, it's one of the best-kept secrets in Orange, is that we are, we have, but it's, but it's a nice, a nice secret. We have a playground, a half-million-dollar playground that, that I understand, the equipment has already been ordered, and it's a good job to the committee. This will be, this will attract many kids, I'm sure, from many of the towns. The residents of Orange were, were promised a playground review meeting as to the equipment and location. I would like to know when this meeting will take place. Only a pre-meeting was, took place, and at that meeting, there was some input from the neighbors. At any rate, the Park and Rec Commission never approved this location. Several commissioners still have many concerns. I was at their meeting, and they expressed some concerns. I'm sure we had, had, I'm sure the best intentions were done. So far, the only, the only, the first selectman has had any input into the field, the usage and the layout of the fields at, at the park, not the Park and Rec Committee. So far, we have, in my opinion, we have a total mess with an irrigation field that no one is going to use and a little, and a major traffic nightmare. Jim, when you barreled out to see me at Fred Wolf Park and you told me that this was none of my business and that I had a big mouth, you were correct on one thing. So it's time to see that what the park and recreation and the town people have to say about Fred Wolf Park. I only have two minutes, so I will see you next month. Thank you.
For those at home and those in the audience, Mr. Pizzano has been against the playground down at Wolf Park from the start. He has come up with every excuse while looking like a concerned citizen since this playground project was initiated. The playground is being put together by a committee of five that were appointed and approved by this Board of Selectmen. I do not sit on the playground committee. I attended the first meeting to put them together and have not attended another one of their meetings. They are open to the public. Mr. Pizzano unfortunately has nothing else to do but cause trouble. If you look at past plans of the property and all, that area was slated for a tennis courts. We're not putting tennis courts there. It was part of the used property. Mr. Pizzano has had use of that property down there for over 20 years and considers it strictly Orange Soccer's property. It's the town of Orange's property and will be expanded with multiple uses for multiple people. The next thing on the slate for there is some more pickleball courts. So, yes, and so there are other future expansions there. There's over 70 acres down there, and it will be utilized by all. We are working with contractors to get prices for the second driveway out of there, and the Park and Rec Commission has been aware of their project right along. So his statements to say that they haven't voted on it, haven't acted on it, haven't reviewed on it, are incorrect. Mr. Pizzano was in an argument with the town engineer when I came on the scene, and when he saw that I came, it was a different tone that came out of Mr. Pizzano. He wanted to start a fight and pick a fight from day one with a children's playground. I support the barrier-free playground and the location that they chose. We had the land cleared for that reason, and it will be going where the playground committee has chosen. It's a $500,000 project paid for with state grant money, and then we've done town work there and all, but it will be the envy of the area for the children. He's just unhappy that it's in his soccer area. Enough said on that. The reason I give that response is we've been hearing it every month here and at Park and Rec, he makes his assertions, but they are not fact-based. They are his opinion. Thank you. Is there anybody else with, from the audience that has items that are for public participation? Is there anybody at the table with public participation? If not, then there are announcements, and Mitch is waiting for announcements, so are there any announcements to be made?
Go ahead, Julia.
I just want to say that last night, I attended the firemen's annual dinner, and, and I want to say that to look around in that, that entire room and see so many uniforms, it was just very warming, how, you know, just very comforting to know that all of these young men and women were out there volunteering to take care of our town all through the day, all through the night, seven, you know, 24/7, and just to see the, the amount of firemen. I just was overwhelmed, absolutely. I understand we're at full roster at this point, and I think.
Seventy-two, I think they're at.
It's awesome. And just, just, just want to say that again, thank you to all the firemen who do get out there and volunteer and help to protect our entire town.
Very good. Are there any other announcements? Yes, Mitch?
Thank you, Judy, for adding that, it's great. So I want to bring everybody up to date on shredding day, which is coming up quicker than you think. It's Saturday, April 2nd. So there's a number of things happening at once at High Plains Community Center. First of all, our biannual, happening at once at High Plains Community Center, first of all, our biannual shredding day for documents that people want to bring to be shredded at no cost. This is being sponsored by the Rotary Club. Donations will be accepted by the Rotarians that will be there for their scholarship committee, and we hope that everyone will bring their documents and bring some money to help the Rotary Club. It's been very successful. Please bring documents in boxes that you're willing to dispose of. Having to wait to give back boxes or, or tubs does hold up production. And this will be, like we did last time, pretty much a touchless for the person who's bringing the documents situation. We ask you to pop your trunk, and volunteers will take the documents away, and they'll be shredded on-site. So that's number one. Number two, we're also collecting mattresses. The Bye Bye Mattress and the Mattress Council for the State of Connecticut will have a truck set up in the front of High Plains for mattresses. You can bring mattresses and box springs of any size. Those are being also recycled, and that'll be free of charge as well. In this case, though, if you want your mattress or box spring or both picked up by the Lions Club, they will do that for $10 a mattress or box spring. Donations are made to Orange Lions charities, and Ken Lenz is your contact at 203-795-3906 to make arrangements to have your mattress or box spring or both picked up. The Orange community women will be accepting clothing, housewares, toys, no DVDs, there's a bunch of no, but that was the one thing I remember, but.
Eight tracks.
No eight tracks either, no cassettes.
Antiques.
Yeah. Under the pavilion, they will be stationed in the pavilion for their community awareness and also for recycling as well. So that, those are all going to happen in the front of High Plains. In addition, this board has approved the Haz Waste Collection for the first time ever in the town of Orange. We will have a Haz Waste Collection. You can do that every Saturday between May and October at, at Long Wharf, but we're bringing it to you. On April 2nd, if you have hazardous waste, you will come in Tribute Way. For those that don't know, this board approved Tribute Way, which is the driveway that goes from the south, southernmost end of High Plains around the back of the fields and ends, well, goes to the Rotary Cozaco Creo Pavilion, which is down below. So you will go in Tribute Way, you'll go straight, if you have Haz Waste, you'll take a left if you've got the clothing, the shredding of the mattresses, you'll go straight with your Haz Waste. You should register ahead of time. There will be applications online to have your registration filled out ahead of time. And Clean Harbors has met with myself, but more importantly, Bob Britton and Don Foyer to set up a Haz Waste disposal area behind High Plains. This will be, you will drive in, you will go down to the Rotary Pavilion, you will unload without getting out of your car, you will unload your hazardous waste, which will be taken by Clean Harbors and disposed of properly. The, you will then proceed around the pavilion, around the back end and back out towards Orange Center Road on the northernmost part of High Plains, coming up the walking path, which will have signs saying there'll be cars for walkers and walkers saying there'll be, or cars will have signs saying there's walkers on the path, so please be careful. And exit back out on Orange Center Road. For those that are bringing hazardous waste, there's an entire list on the website, you can check that out. Things that are not supposed to be brought, though, are car batteries and propane tanks are not to be brought to Haz Waste. And also, if you have paint, please, if you have paint only, well, if you have paint, it is hazardous waste you can bring to Haz Waste behind the pavilion. If you only have paint, please don't take your time or our efforts of paying for that, because we do pay for the hazardous waste, bring your paint to the transfer station on a Saturday. If you only have paint, instead of waiting in line with just paint, we do collect paint on Saturdays at the transfer station, once again, no charge. So I think I've covered that all, April 2nd. I encourage everyone to clean up. It's spring cleaning. Find those chemicals that you haven't used in a long time, under the sink, downstairs, in the shed, pool supplies, things like that.
Where's the website?
The website, just on our website. You can go to our website, there's some, some links on our website to Orange Recycles and also to Public Works. You can also go to Haz, I believe the Haz Waste website has it as well.
A lot of people out there don't realize, things as simple as some of your cleaning detergents, you're cleaning out your aunt, your uncle, your grandfather's house. Years ago, people used more things for fruit tree sprays or in their gardens and even on their lawns than a lot of people use nowadays. They were much more harmful things and all, so what you think, you might just bag and throw in the hopper or something, those are the things they're looking for, all of those types of things. But even your cleaning agents, if it's old stuff that you don't use anymore, tag it and get rid of it, and the, this is easy because it'll be right here in town. So thanks, Mitch, for all of that.
Thanks, Jim.
Anybody else with announcements? Otherwise, I have a few here. I too attended that fireman's dinner last night, and Drew Panapata got the firefighter of the year award with much explanation, and congratulations to Drew. Drew is an outstanding fireman, and he earned that award in some pretty intense fires that he knew how to deal with. He's a professional fireman as well as a volunteer here in Orange, and he's an outstanding individual, and we're very lucky to have him and the other 71 members and their families. You can't forget the families, because when somebody gets up, whether it's 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon, the family's affected besides the person who's responding to our home or property for a call. So congratulations to Drew, and thank you to the entire fire department. In our memoriams for this month, I only have, I have three, and I may have missed some, but Patricia Connolly passed away just recently. She was an OVNA board member and all. Sue Blanchett, Sue Blanchett was just in the building just, really just several weeks ago. She had been, worked for us in many capacities, but most recently, she was, you would pay her your taxes at the window. She was usually at the window in the tax office, and she was gonna work this past January, and this wasn't quite feeling right, and unfortunately, Sue was found to have stage four lung cancer, and within two weeks of the time, it went from bad to worse and passed away in one day at hospice. So our thoughts are with the Blanchettes and that sudden loss. And Dr. Bob Lanzi, I don't know how many of you went to Dr. Lanzi, the allergist, for many years here in town, and his time too. So our thoughts are with all of them and their families at this time. Most importantly, I think that, and I think everybody here agrees, I did mention it last night because of the firemen, but I think that most people's thoughts and well wishes are with the, the people of the Ukraine also. With that tragedy that's going on over there is just barbaric at best, and when I brought it up last night at the fireman's dinner when I spoke, something that was quite am- it up last night at the Fireman's Dinner, when I spoke, something that was quite amazing, I've seen on the news repeatedly, is there's bombs bursting in air, there's people running for cover, and here's the Ukrainian firemen out there trying to put buildings out that are still standing yet on fire and all, and there is nobody braver than a fireman trying to put out a fire, and bombs going off around them. So, I think everybody in the town of Orange's thoughts are with those people, and that devastation that they're dealing with over there is just terrible. Sunday, March 13th, as daylight savings begins, please remember to spring ahead and move your clocks ahead one hour. Be sure to check, we get many people calling the Town Hall, we are working on the bicentennial. Patrick O'Sullivan is the Chair, and he has a great committee, and that committee is expanding with, as the different chairs of sections of it, bringing people to help, but be sure to check on the Town Website. The Town Orange Website is the easiest place to check up. There's going to be things going on from May till it closes at the fair in September, and there'll be different things going on all season long, so please remember to do that. There's forums, I think, are they still upstairs out on the bookcase? There's forums up there for the, there's a golf tournament, and there's also a family dinner. That's going to be after the parade, so it will be quite fun, that's, that's coming up, so please, Mission Barbecue is providing the box dinners for it. So, it ought to be a fun event on the fairgrounds for families and all. The Police Department, if you didn't see the notice upstairs on the door, they're having a Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at High Plains Community Center. So, if you have drugs, or from family members that had drugs that are in the medicine cabinet or somewhere, don't flush them down the toilet, because eventually, it ends up in the groundwater, or if you have a sewer system, it ends up in that, and in the ocean, and we're ending up with more and more damaged lobsters, and three-legged frogs, and fish with distortions and stuff, so get it disposed of properly. It kind of goes along with all the things that Mitch already spoke about, but very important. The Police Department, they're starting their next Citizens Academy on Wednesday, April 27th. If you're interested in this, you can contact Detective Carolyn Bailey to register at 203-891-2130. That is a very informative program to do. Yeah, you did it.
I did it.
Yeah, the Citizens Academy, but it really is very, you learn a lot. The Lions Club's Annual Easter Egg Hunt at High Plains Community Center is Saturday, April 9th, with a rain date of April 16th. The Easter Bunny arrives at 12:30, and the egg hunt begins at 1:00 PM. The event is free of charge. That's been going on since I was a child, now, I guess. With that said, I have no more announcements for tonight. Next thing is to consider an act on the minutes of the February 9th, 2022 meeting. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If not, state, if there is, state page and paragraph? If not, is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Stain? Unanimous, very good. The next item is the biggest draw of the night. And I tell you before, whoever's going to represent you, we all support it. So, just, just so you know, so whoever's, so whoever's coming up here, don't be nervous. The first item on the agenda tonight is to consider an act on the request from Discovery to Cure to use the High Plains Fairgrounds on Sunday, May 1st, and with that, who's going to be the Speaker? Or all of you can come up, I don't care.
My name and where I live?
Yeah.
Ruth Ann Ornstein, 773, Orange Center Road.
And what you're doing there, all of them.
I got that part.
Mostly, mostly for out there, for the public.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean on the camera, not...
Got it, got it, no, no. On May 1st, we are looking to bring Discovery to Cure Program from the Yale School of Medicine, a fundraiser for women's gynecological cancers. We've run for the last 10 years, a walk to raise funds for research, early detection and early prevention for women's cancers. We're looking to bring it to High Plains this year. The last two years, we were virtual. We've finally got permission from Yale to come back in person, and we, many of our committee, we have businesses, we're community members, taxpayers, and we all love High Plains, and we'd love to bring the event here. We know it's last minute, we're looking to work as closely with the town to make everything work. We'll have between 300 and 400 people, we'll have community vendors, we have crafters, we'll have food trucks, we will have children's events, we'll have speakers, we're hoping Mr. Zoli will be available to speak for us as well, Rosa DeLora will be there, who's a 30-year ovarian cancer survivor, doctors from Yale will be there, all funds raised will go to Yale Research, and we're hoping that we'll be able to come to the town and use the facility for the program.
Now, I know you've met with Park and Rec, who have voted on this and sent you here. You will probably, I will presume, meet with probably Ray LaPlante and Max Martins from the Police Department for logistics and all that, so they're aware of it. Any food vendors that are coming need to go to our Health Department upstairs, which is second floor of this building, down the end, and arrange for an inspection with, I'm not sure if Brian will do that, or which one of them, but one of them will do that. If you have other needs in that Park and Rec, usually, Logistically can handle them, otherwise, you arrange for them yourself to bring in, you know, the extras that you need. I think it's a great cause, and I'll open up to my Board of Selectmen if I've missed something.
Excellent, excellent. I definitely make a motion, and, and I want to say, I applaud you, I applaud everybody who really gets out there to raise funds for cancer. It's definitely something I think we're getting closer to, as far as we really are making some successes out there. So, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any other discussion? I have none. Everybody has none? Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Staying unanimous.
Thank you. Hopefully, you'll stop by, and, um, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, just let Ian know, like, we're not supposed to be there time-wise, et cetera, and, yeah, it's no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, excellent. See, that wasn't, was almost painless. Item number two is to consider an act on the bid for Marielle Tracy's rooftop unit project. You have bids in front of you there, Mr. Gray is coming up to the podium as I speak, and the reason for this, this is being, I believe, this is coming out of ARPA funds, Jim, is that where they appropriated these funds for this? I think?
I'm not sure.
I think so, it's the, part of that federal government funds that we receive. Bye-bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Clear room, huh?
What? Jeez, Mike.
This should come more often, I guess.
And so, why don't you tell us a little bit about your project, there we are.
Sure, so, this is a project over at Marielle Tracy's School. We have three, three rooftop units, they're condensers, that service the offices, the cafeteria of the school, and then the boardroom, the board offices, and the board meeting room of Marielle Tracy's School. The rooftop units were installed in 1989, so they have far surpassed their end-of-life. We've been throwing money at them, just keeping them running, so it's definitely time that these need to be replaced.
And this is an allowable use with that ARPA funds? So, again, it's government funding that the town received, and it's one of the projects that some of that funding is going towards. You had one, two, three, four, five bidders here. You're confident with your low bidder? You've met with them, and everybody's...
Yes, sir.
...in tune and all that?
Yep, so everybody attended a mandatory walkthrough.
Okay.
So, they all came through.
All right. Any, Mitch?
Mike, one quick question, it says that the base bid price is $79,700. The motion you're looking for tonight, is that for that amount, or you're looking for anything above that, because that's the base bid? Is there a contingency necessary?
So, in meeting with the Capitol team, it was up to $85,000.
Okay.
So, I'd probably look for a motion up to $85,000, not to exceed $85,000.
Yeah. So, with that, I can, I'll make that motion to approve a amount up to $85,000 for this proposal for the Marielle Tracy's School Rooftop Unit Project, awarding the bid to Rotolo Mechanical.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? All done?
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I just want to say, we appreciate all the support, and the continued support, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
I think you have some other projects that may be coming forward also, that will be covered under some of that funding as well, so, very good.
Have a nice weekend.
Thanks, Mike.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ralph?
I don't want to say public, but I just want to...
Oh, you're doing it, so go ahead.
Do you want to write it down? I'll read it first. I just wanted to say that Mike Gray's done an excellent job in, in that position, he was formerly the Principal of Bracebrook, and he's taken over the business aspect for elementary schools in town, and I've worked with him on the Capitol planning for a couple of years now, and he's got all, he's always has his stuff and time and place, and he knows what he's doing, and I know the Superintendent's very happy with him too, so I've got a lot of confidence in Mike.
Yes, he has, he was an outstanding principal, and they loved him there, and they cried when he decided to do, to make the transfer, but in a previous life, he had expertise in business management, and buildings, and all this sort of thing, and shifted gears over to that, and he seems to love it, and is doing as well with that as he did with, as a school principal, so he's a, he's a great, great asset. Yes, he is, PJ. Thank you. All right, item number three, Dennis is here, to consider an act on request to purchase new vehicle for community services. You have a document here in front of you, I believe, come on up, Dennis. I believe this was done with the town bid, I believe, because I see it's with Genghis, so I presume, the state bid, I mean.
Yes, Connecticut State Buying Contract, yes.
The Department of Administrative Services, which then alleviates us from having to go out to bid. The van that we had, have still, was tired, and that was purchased jointly with the Rotary Club years ago, and then it was having some mechanical issues and all, so it was deemed time to replace it. The Board of Finance did fund in this budget for a vehicle, and then they had the other vehicle all stripped and of, of the wrap, as they call it, and all on it, the graphics, and it was sitting in the Public Works parking lot, and unfortunately, one of our employees backed into it, so it's still sitting in our parking lot. At this time, the insurance company is toying with fixing it or scrapping it, we haven't gotten that final determination yet, but in the meantime, we're getting a new vehicle, and that's why Dennis's request is here before us tonight. Does that pretty much sum it up?
Beautiful.
You tell us now what they do with it.
Well...
That's your job.
Some of the things we want to do with it is, we're looking for a vehicle to transport one to three residents, something that can go on the Parkway, a smoother ride than the vans that we have, because we have residents with chronic back issues. We're looking for something that doesn't require a special DMV endorsement, so a regular licensed driver can use it. We'll use it to pick up donations, and we would like something that's all-wheel-drive for the snow.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if we drop somebody off at the hospital, it starts snowing, we want to get them back.
Yeah, this, this makes maneuvering in some doctor's offices and the hospital and all, the buses that we have as opposed to the van, that this, the difference with this. And it's easier for people with mobility issues to get in and out of, yeah, so. So, any questions for Dennis on this van? Motion approved. Very good. Motion made and seconded, any other discussion on it?
This is, was already put in the budget for...
It's in this budget.
This budget?
Yeah.
And we're talking about the Ford Escape, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Staying unanimous, very good.
Thank you. I just want to also say, May 19th is Pasta Festa, and we're going to recognize Don Clark, Mary Ann Miller, and Ralph Okenquist.
I already recognize them over here.
If anybody wants to wait tables that night, we'd love to have you.
Very nice.
All right, Mitch will be there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheers, it'll be good stuff.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Item number four is a request by the Orange Board of Finance, view on the FY 2223 budget, the budget that is being formulated, which starts July 1 of '22. Mr. Leahy is here in the audience, and is coming up as we speak.
Thanks, Jim.
One tall person, then we go...
Yeah, I know, I was, I didn't know what to, you know, before I get started, I, I don't get old at, and I've not been hardly at any Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen meetings, and I have to tell you, I was pretty impressed. Mitch, that was a hell of a summary. And Judy, I have the same impression of the same, of the Fireman's event that you had last night, and it was just great. But my reason for being here tonight, my objective, if you would, is to make you as town leaders aware of situation and trends that I think are important to the town, obviously they're from financial nature. For those who might be watching on TV, I have the feeling Board of Selectmen meetings get a lot more ink or visibility than Board of Finance meetings, PJ. So, my name's Jim Leahy, I'm 495 Lambert Road, I've been living there since 1983, I'm proud to say that I still feel like a rookie in town, and, and I'm happy to be in that position, or feel like I'm in that position. So, what I would like to do is, I would like to hand out, and there's a reason for this, let me see, this is for, I want to do these in priority order, I think, or seniority order, but, Jim, this is for you, Mitch, if you can handle that down.
We'll just pass them, yeah.
That's it, but your name's on them, okay?
Oh.
For Ralph, okay?
There's Mitch, there's Ralph, and there's...
All right, John, and PJ will be over here, and I have one extra, I can give it to Ben or Ann, and, there you go, okay?
I'll share with you.
So, what you have in your hand right now is what I'm going to go through, and also in the manila folder, there's three articles that I've authored recently. One is be coming out this coming Monday in the Orange Town News, another one is be coming out, I believe, excuse me, I think it'll be in mailbox Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, in the Woodbridge Town News, and there's another one from February, from the Orange Town News that I authored. There are also two other ones not in that document, but they are available online in the Woodbridge Town News in February, and also the Orange Town News in January. So, I'm here tonight, I went to Jim and said, hey, got to get on the agenda, and when he told me what he would like to hear, and the time he would like me to cover it, and it reminded me of a very quick story, so again, before I start, you've probably heard the story, Ben, about Edward Everett, right? He said, they said to him, someone asked him, we'd like to give a speech, and he said, well, depends, how long? And he goes, what do you mean? And he said, well, if it's going to be five minutes, five to 10 minutes, I'll need a couple of months. If it's going to be for like 35 to 40 minutes, I'd need a month, but if it's for two or three hours, I can start right now. So, Jimmy asked me to get, make sure I covered this in five to 10 minutes. So, that being Friday, I've been working on it ever since, and I feel very good that I had done so, and I'd like to dive in, and what I'd like to do is, like we do in the Board of Finance meetings, is just, if you have a question, just fire up, okay? So, I'm going to go through them one at a time, kind of, so if you just go to the first page, we'll just start right in. The first page has to do with the AMIDIVE surplus. If you hadn't known, it's had a history, and it should have a surplus each year, but last four years, as you can see, it's been about $3 million, all right, $3 million, we pay half of that, okay? So, you can see what it has been, and what it's been for the last four years. You're going to hear this last four years theme coming up, because there are other things about that. And what I'd like to do is kind of together, very, at a, at a steady pace, go through these, and stay together if we could, okay? Anything on that, page two, page three? Page two, page three? Now, this is key, and it's not intuitive, so I, Judy, if I just have a conversation with you, maybe that's the way I'd like to do it. Think of your house that's having a budget, you have a budget for last year, you have a budget for this year, and those are the two green columns that you see there. And if you have a 1.8% increase, you know you have a little bit more in this particular coming year. Now, if you found out that you didn't spend at all that you had in your budget for last year, then your real increase is not only the 1.8% increase, but also whatever you had that you didn't spend. And in this particular case, what you see in this graphic is 8.2% in red. Now, the actual numbers on the right-hand side, and these are actual numbers from fiscal year '20 and '21 to '21 and '22, and most of these charts are going to be about Amity, and it's only going to be in the expenditure side. What I'm trying to do is share with you the leadership of this town, the functional leadership of this town, all right, what I am observing, okay, and that what I've written up, okay? Everybody good on that one? All right, next chart. Now, what's going on right now? Well, what's been proposed at Amity is a four-point, in the yellow on the right there, 4.92% increase. There's been other proposals as well, but we'll get to that in a second. But some of the data is interesting. Next year, there's going to be 68, 68 fewer students, right?
All right, page five.
Page five? Yep. 68 fewer students. Our share has gone up slightly, even though we have had a decline in students, all right, because we have the share of the total. There's a proposal in this document for an additional seven to eight staff, I think it's 7.2, 7.5, something like that. So there's a spending increase of $2.5 million, the numbers, the specific numbers sitting right there. We have about half of that, so you can figure that we're going to get hit by half of that, okay? But what's interesting, and what most people don't know, is the average over the last 16 years has been 2.35%, so this is more than double what the average over the last 15, 16 years has spent, all right? The one-year impact to the Orange taxpayers is 1.5 million, you can see the details there, which turns out to be therefore a 6.27% increase in spending that hits us, all right, people here. And note already is, it doesn't stop there. Right now, their proposal for next year is another 4.5, 4.9% increase. So over the next four years, the budget increase to the Town of Orange is nearly $3.9 million, and I wanted the leaders of this town to know these facts. Okay? We good on that page?
No.
Thank you. Next page. So you have the data, I've run the data, it's a chart, you can read it. From a high-level mark in 2009, 2010, Amity had 2,549 students. It's now down to 21, 24, or thereabouts. 425 fewer students, a sixth, 16.7% decrease, and practically speaking, where there used to be six, now there are five, from a ratio point of view. Okay? So that's just the data, I don't suspect we need to spend more time on that. However, what happened during that decline is that the full-time equivalent, staff really, right, was flat for that 10-year period as it had declined. And then recently, the last four years, second time we've talked about last four years, right, we have seen a rapid increase in full-time equivalents, and that's just data, and that's just facts. So when you start to see cause and effect, you, maybe there might be some there, but it's the data, okay? Are we good to go into the next page? Page eight? There's only, there's only, we're halfway through, right? This is a summary of the various increases that are out there, and I'll just tell you what I know. The initial proposal at the Amity was 4.92%. If that happened, Orange would be hit with 6.27% increase, if every, from there, right? And Woodbridge would be 6.98, 8% increase. Now, you may be asking, if I were you, oh, how come they're not the same? And the reason is, because there's a shift first in, in how many students you have as a percentage, but more importantly, there's a decrease in other revenue. We got, you know, Amity runs mostly from the member towns giving revenue, but it is also from how much revenue they get from the state, or whatever other sources, okay? So that's been, that, there was a decline there, and that's why the, the impact is higher than the percentage increase. Now, recently, the Amity Finance Committee, on February 28th, they had a motion for 3.99%, which passed by a, 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 four to vote, four in favor, two against. The representatives from Bethany and Orange Board of Finances voted against it. All right, the other, the Woodbridge representative from Board of Finance voted for it, and the three Board of Education members on the Amity Finance Committee voted for it. And you can see, if the Amity Board of Education were to approve 3.99%, you can see the impact to Orange, you can see the impact to Woodbridge, you can see the percentage increase in that line item budget going forward, and you're talking over 5% in each case, if it were 3.99. At our meeting, the Orange Board of Finance talked about this after, as you can see in the, underneath the kicker box that's in the middle of the page there, we approved a motion to support. We don't have the, the ability to directly impact the budget for Amity, but we said we would approve it, we would support it up to a 0.41% increase, you can see the data there, okay? Now, this vote came, as you can see written there, after we did an in-depth review and discussion of the budget details, a two-hour dialogue with the Amity leadership, right here in this room, and a thorough systematic review of current and historical Amity data, some of which have been in those articles that have been in the paper and that you now have a copy of, I'll send them to you electronically, all right? So it's a little bit of a complex slide, so I don't want to rush through it. If anybody has a question, if you're good to go, you're good to go.
So far.
Okay, good. Thank you. Page nine. This is probably the least, the most surprising chart in this deck. You have two bar graphs by year, fiscal year '17, '18, '18, '19, '19, '20, and '21, and the averages. The surpluses, you see in the orange bar. The actual increase in the budget is in the blue bar. Now, you have to stop and think, wait a second. I had a budget last year, and I increased it a little bit. My surplus was massive. What does that mean? That means that if you had a zero increase, in fact, if you had a negative increase, you would have, and you did accomplish your task of educating our kids. And that's what these surpluses, that's what it means, what's, what's going on with these surpluses. In each year, the Amity school system provided excellent educational services for its students without a need for any increase in each of these years. Now, it would not be cumulative, but when they say, oh, we can't go under 3.99%, okay? You got to wonder. All right? Any questions on that, the data itself? Now, the monthly, this, this, I did obviously some research, because I had to go back and find the data. This is a graph, page 10. This is a graph that shows you, each month, we get the data from the Amity Finance Committee. They were formed, as you guys know, from back in, what was it, Jim, 2000, 2001, when we had the '18 referendum?
That was Mitch's time, yeah.
Yeah, right? All right, and all of a sudden, they were down to $2 million, and, you know, '18, whatever. So every month, we get the data, and every month, I look at it, all right? I spent four years on the Amity Finance Committee, I helped develop the standard work, so it would report out, so you could see what's going on. And what you have here is, month to month, what you show as the surplus. Now, remember, we just said in February, PJ, for example, they only have the January data, right? At the end of February, you don't have the February data yet, right? So that's the data, you're making the decision, like they did on February 28th, all right? When you make the decision, when our elected officials vote about future year budgets. Now, when do the town taxpayers vote? They vote in the early part of May, but we have the March data, because that comes out in the second week of April, but we don't have the May data, so that's when we are voting. So we, when our elected officials vote, they know what's going on all through January, and when the townspeople vote, you know what's going on in March. Let's take a look what happens after that. Have all the data, anybody needs the data, well, we have it. Did all the graphs myself, including a misspelling in the article that come out. What I learned, Benny, is if you do spell check and you've capitalized a word, it won't check that word. Major learning. Anyway, so Exhibit P here, you could see that, you could see the actual numbers on the chart, right? But suddenly, more than, it's actually three and a third times, not just three times, all right? Suddenly, at the end of the fiscal year, we've got this massive hockey stick swooping up. Whoa, we just found this. After we've been working on what we had, remember that other chart, Judy, when I said it only went up a little bit, but how much was your? Now, granted, you may not know exactly, but trends are trends, right? So this is what I observe. This is what's happened in the past. Very close to finishing. I know you have a lot to do. Dates for, and for people all nine, I can put this up on the, on one of the websites, either in with, on the Orange Board of Selectmen or, or the Orange Board of Finance, they both, either one would work. This coming Monday, the Amity Board of Education will meet to vote on the fiscal year '22-23 Amity budget. One of those articles I wrote depicted what would happen if everybody had these kind of increases. What would be the impact to the taxpayer, okay? It was what I called a thought experiment. Anyway, that's coming up this coming Monday. Secondly, between March and April, they'll, Amity, as they always do, will see leadership, will seek ways to trim the approved budget, maybe they get more information from Anthem in terms of medical costs, that medical account has been a, kind of like a, an item over the years. On May 3rd, the taxpayers from the three member towns will vote on the Amity budget. At the bottom, I made, I made a list of the seven members of the Amity Board of Education from Orange, and while we don't know the actual, we know the budget hearing date, Jim, it's April 21st, that's when we, the Board of Finance, will present the budget. We don't exactly know, I made an estimate of when the town hearing would be and when we vote. It's typically in mid, in mid-May, right, and it's like 10 days apart, maybe two weeks, so I, I made it a stab.
Ian can give you those dates by email, because we had set them last month.
Oh, did you? Good.
They are set.
Oh, okay, great.
May 11, May 18?
11 and 18, Mitch?
Yeah.
This is for the town, the town budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're separate votes, when you're voting for the.
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of a knockaway thing.
The annual town meeting is.
The annual town meeting is Wednesday, May 11th, at 7:30 at High Plains, and the referendum is Wednesday, May 18th, also at High Plains, all day.
So the real, the real verbiage there should say annual town meeting, not annual, a town hearing?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, I obviously goofed that one up. Okay, the last slide is just some comments. Remember, the, the, that was a unanimous, you know, we're, we're pretty much, you know, it's not like national parties, but both parties in the town, on the Board of Finance, unanimously supported the 0.41% increase, and here's some commentary that I thought was useful. It was in the other articles, and obviously, taxpayers will judge, you know, what best serves the needs of the people in town, and they can vote on that on May 3rd. So that's what I have, I have an appendix of, you know, the future data, but that's it. I hope I didn't do too long, but I did spend a lot of time trying to skinny it down.
You did all right.
And be conservative here.
And we know that you have asked Amity, and continue to ask Amity continual questions, so that's a good thing.
Well.
I mean, it's, it's, education is 60, I think that's about 67% now of our town budget, and the larger piece of it is the Amity piece, so, and you do need to, because there are many different views that sit on that board up there, so it's very important that there are people that bird-dog it, because you need to.
So I'm presenting it, just in closing then, you know, you have some data, okay? You have some articles, I'm always available, you know that, particularly now that I'm retired, and, you know, maybe there's, if you know people, particularly in other towns as well, I think it's, it's important, it's important for a dialogue on this, because it's, it just seems, and you can look at the data, and, you know, you know, all I hear is like COVID, and like COVID, you know, is the answer to every question you ask, I don't think, I think there are other reasons.
The other towns are concerned too. Woodbridge is extremely concerned, their mill rate is currently, I think I was told, 42.9 last night, and they're trying, trying to live within a two-mill increase, they're trying not to break 45-mill increase in Woodbridge, so they would be 40, I guess, 44.9 is what they're trying to stay under, but Beecher Schools initially came in at 13.5%, and they're down considerably, but it's still significant and all, and Selectmen Heller, we all have conversations, Beth Heller and Polico Francesco and myself, and Beth is very concerned in Woodbridge with their mill rate, it could exceed 45 by more than that if they can't get their share under control, both in their elementary and in their Amity system. So Woodbridge, they have a little bit of a different structure of their Board of Selectmen allowances and Board of Finance allowances, and they did something we don't have the authority to do by our charter, but both their Board of Selectmen and their Board of Finance unanimously voted down Beecher Schools' submission of the 13.5%, I know. So they're really up against it there. Our mill rate is, what, 33?
I was just going to jump in. For those who hear Jim say that Woodbridge is 42, I think it's 42.4, 42-something. I had 42.4 when I did my calculations on some other articles, but ours is 33.25, 33 and a quarter.
So.
Okay. And again, we always are striving, whatever happens on the revenue side is always looking to do more with less, because the fact of the matter is, that's what we do around our houses, our homes, everywhere we go, and yet somehow, when we start to spend government money, there's just a tendency of, oh, well, you know, we have to be a little, and I think this town, among others, does a great job of that, so. Any other questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? All right? All right, next, we have three zoning issues. I'm going to defer to Attorney Marino, he handled it with the Zoning Commission, and he's going to handle it with us too. Item, we'll start with item number five, is to consider an act on opting out of the provisions of Subsection 6A to D of Public Act 21 to 29 concerning accessory apartments in accordance with Subsection 6F of Public Act 2129. What did you say? Yeah.
All right, what I'm going to do is.
Do you want to do all three at once? Should I read all three?
No, don't, please don't.
[laughter]
No, no, let me give a quick overview, and then you can decide what you want to do, okay? So, it's, numbers five, six, and seven are a result of law that was passed in the last legislative session. Public Act 2129, modified, it was actually, Public Act 2129, 21-3, and 21-2, modified land use dramatically in the last legislative session. There's a trending in the state, and maybe we could get Mr. Leahy to come back and give another presentation, because I use, I use all, there's my New York coming out, need to know what is going on up in Hartford. There's a trend to strip local, localities of authority when it comes to their zoning. It's, you know, it's a concept called zoning for equity, and it's really to bring housing, more housing opportunities in communities like Orange for what. for what the state deems to be people who are deprived of those opportunities. And there's a group that has put together reports on the several communities, and their goal is to do one in every community in the state. Orange actually was in the first report. And Orange was criticized for its policies and acquisitions of open space, and functionally said that we are racist in acquiring open space because we do so to prevent housing opportunities. Clearly, that is wrong. We do so because we want to maintain the character of our town, and we want to maintain the environment within which we live, and the land that we have is lost once it's developed. So I took offense to what I read, as being a resident of the town, but this is a trend. And if we just ignore it, we're going to lose all local authority that we have.
Ian, break right there from that.
Yes, sir.
Woodbridge is in a lawsuit over this exact issue for a property on the corner of Newton Road and Orchard Road for this situation, just so you're aware.
So that's somewhat of a long-winded way of saying, although there have been changes to, dramatic changes to the land use laws in the state of Connecticut, clearly, there was a resistance and a compromise that was sought between the legislature, legislators, because there are three opt-out provisions. So what happens under the new law is, the first one that we have listed here is, relates to accessory dwelling units, they call them accessory apartments. The second one relates to placing a limitation on parking spaces required for dwelling units. And the third one relates to temporary health care structures. So what the law, the new law says is, these are now the rules. And if you do not opt out, we're going to give you an opportunity to opt out, but if you do not opt out, then these are the rules that you must abide by regardless of what your local zoning says. And when it comes to accessory dwelling units, for example, single-family homes under the new law that exists today have the right, not the, like, special permit option where there's discretion, has the right to put an apartment on their property. That could be detached, you know? So right now in Orange, we have an in-law option, you know, has to share...
Attached, though.
Has to share a common wall, is, you know, you'll think about the effect that could have on the town of Orange if every single-family homeowner put an apartment on their property that was detached. And I have, I'm not going to say who I think would have fun with that. There are some people that we've been engaged with in litigation over the years, and they get away with a lot under our existing zoning regulations. Now, we're going to provide them with allowing...
Open door.
Right? So, you know, it really, these laws really deprive the towns of making zoning decisions based upon character of their community and consideration of density. We're now, and I'm going to give you some brief overviews so that, and again, do what you will, zoning has referred this to us, they've opted out, and I'll explain the process in a moment while we're here. But under the new law, you are not allowed to put restrictions on this square footage of, or the size, or the number of units in density anymore. So remember when we were doing a Todd district, and we said you can't have more than 200? You can't do that. It's illegal now. So if I come in with an A30G, I could put 1,000, if it, you know, and, you know, if the land will support it based upon what the engineering says. So again, this is another dagger at the heart of rural communities that have efforted to maintain a certain way of life. And, you know, and again, I take exception to it because people have worked hard to live where they are. And, you know, and what the law is now saying is that that doesn't matter, you know? So under these three provisions, and I'm not going to cite them because Jim did a great job and confused us all already. So accessory apartments, the process starts at the zoning level. The zoning department, commission reviews the matter, and they say, all right, we're going to, we believe we should opt out. We refer the matter to a public hearing. We close our public hearing, and we vote. We publish our decision, and then we refer it to the Selectmen. That's the process. Zoning, public hearing, zoning vote, publication, Board of Selectmen. It's the legislative body that, of the town, that has the final say on whether or not you opt out. So although zoning has determined on, in these three instances, that we should opt out, you can veto that functionally and say, no, we shouldn't. So I want to provide you just very brief, and briefer than what I am, have been now, with respect to what these are. So I already explained to you what accessory dwelling units would do. It would allow every single-family homeowner within residential zone to put an apartment that could be detached on their property. The restriction on parking spaces with respect to dwelling units is saying that you cannot require more than one parking space for a studio and more than, I believe it's 1.5 spaces for up to a two-bedroom. So it puts a limitation on parking. So think of these big developments that people, like what we're doing down at Firelight. This would put restrictions on our parking and saying, Town of Orange, you don't understand what you need for parking, this is what you must do. So by opting out of that, you're retaining the jurisdiction and the discretion to make those decisions for yourselves. And the last one is temporary health care structures. Temporary health care structure is, think of one of those pods that are about 400 or 500 square feet, you know, like those portable pods that...
I was thinking like a tiny house.
Well, it could be, arguably. I think they're about 500 square feet in size. And when I Googled them, because I was curious to see what is a temporary health care structure, it looked like a construction van, you know, construction...
Trailer.
Trailer, thank you. And so under the law, you could put a temporary health care structure on your property, anywhere, front yard, backyard, side yard, for the purposes of caring for someone. It doesn't have to be a related person. So, you know, now, you know, we can get into, you know, economies are starting to become different. Maybe it's a business opportunity for me to rent out my front yard, you know? I don't know. People will do, take these laws and do the most dramatic things with them that we can't anticipate today. So by opting out, what we're saying is, we're going to leave our, and we're going to leave the discretion of these decisions in our zoning commission. So those are the decisions you have to make. There are three. Accessory dwelling units, parking spaces, and temporary health care structures. Does anyone have any questions? And I have a, I have a Power Point slide here, but he wouldn't put up the...
So you're saying the zoning board, they held a public hearing?
On all three.
Right.
Yes.
And they was just...
They opted out.
Obviously, and I understand what the result was. Was there any attendance at these public hearings, you know?
None was reported to me.
Okay.
And it's interesting, too, we were cited on that, but Orange has worked hard for a lot of years, and that accessory attach, what do we call it? The attached dwelling to the house is allowed. And we have quite a few people who have taken advantage of that zoning allowance over the years. The town worked when they bought the Army Housing to look forward towards creating some more affordable housing. More recently, with Carol Martin's project on Smith Farm Road that is being re-engineered right now, is 46 units, fully affordable project that we welcomed with open arms. I did see yesterday or the day before that down at Firelight Center there, the backstrip building and all is all fenced around. So it looks like they will probably be getting ready to demolish that pretty soon. And there's 72 five apartments going there.
I think 80.
73, so, I don't know, but a number, something like that. So, I mean, we have very carefully worked. You have that other project on Indian River Road, across from Christmas Tree Shops, which is age-restricted, and it's going to be independent living to assisted care to full care over in that project, you know? And so Orange has worked, moving forward, trying to create some alternatives for all. And it's just that we're in that bubble right now, as everybody is with this, with the prices of housing. But, you know, Woodbridge has had these opportunities also. They have areas where they even have sewers. We don't have near as much sewers as they do. And nobody's moved anything forward over there like down on Bradley Road and some of those areas where they could. But we've actually worked very hard on moving this forward. So I think we're in a better place, but I think that our zoning board should keep control of the way things are done also. I think that it's not a matter of being snooty, it's a matter of proper planning. And I think that's important. And some of our areas, we have septic systems, mostly not sewers. And we all know sometimes our septic systems are a little difficult to plot on our lots.
And I will say for you all, to the extent that you're interested, and I think we should state them for, just for your, we'll say, your record that you understood them. The zoning commission stated their reasoning in their resolution, so I'll go through them quickly. With respect to the accessory dwelling units, the zoning commission found that their decision and declaration to opt out was based on the incompatibility of the accessory apartments within the residential neighborhoods, which have been designated as historic or eligible for such designation. The Orange zoning regulations already regulate accessory apartments that provide temporary affordable housing options for individuals likely to be served by the new law. The failure of Public Act 2129 to provide the zoning commission of the Town of Orange, the Board of Selectmen, and the people of the Town of Orange with enough flexibility to regulate accessory apartments in a way that is compatible with the goals of the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development. And the small number of zoning enforcement personnel that the town has would make it impossible to oversee and regulate this new law. So that is the ADUs. With respect to the parking, again, actually, we'll go to the temporary health care. They found that the new law is incompatible, sorry, the allowance of the new law makes the location of these units incompatible in residential neighborhoods, incompatible in historically designated zones, and deprives the zoning commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town of Orange residents with the flexibility that is needed to regulate this issue. And the limited number of personnel that is employed by the town would make it impossible to regulate. And similarly, the final one is the parking. The reasoning for opting out would be the existing zoning regulations adequately address the parking needs of the town, and the failure of the Public Act to provide this commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the people of the Town of Orange with enough flexibility to regulate the parking needs in a way that is compatible with the goals of the town. So that's, that's the reasoning that they stated for opting out.
So my question to you, Vinny, is, would it be your recommendation to us? I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but I mean, I would like personally to opt out, and I would like to make sure our town still has the ability to act on these issues. But my question to you is, do we need to formally make a resolution like that? And if so, is it something that we just say that we concur with these resolutions?
Right.
As stated by you?
Right. So I did not prepare resolutions for this body like I did for the zoning commission because the zoning commission was required to hold a public hearing. This body was not required to hold a public hearing. The zoning commission was required to state publicly what their reasoning was. This body is not required to do that. So I always try to keep it simpler for you all, you know?
I would think that it's written there, so the motion should say, as stated in the reasons that have been found by, in agreement with our zoning commission or something along that lines, if you're in agreement. Does everybody understand that? I mean...
Right. And what we can do, because I think I have them written out.
They're here. We have them all.
You have the...
Ian has them in each one.
For the Selectmen?
Well, the ones that were from zoning. See, each packet has it in it.
Oh, no, no, I understand it. Yes.
Well, no, you do have the zoning's opt-out.
Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, you know, you...
So if you concur with those as found by the zoning commission, covers you.
I think so.
I do too. Thank you.
I'm good.
Vin, any questions?
Go ahead, Mitch.
In light of this heavy-handedness from the state of Connecticut, has the zoning commission, or are they, do you think, considering any changes at all to our existing regulations that might make us closer to compliance, obviously not in compliance with what we're about to vote on? Is there any consideration for loosening our accessory apartments that they don't have to be a relative? Are they looking to do anything different with the parking regulations to look at each one a little differently than maybe the strictness that we have in our zoning regulations? The temporary health care, I don't, great kid who address.
I think they've looked at them, and I think they feel as they are written, they work because of individuals over the past that have proven that it sometimes allows a little too much wiggle room for illegalities that may happen. And there are some that were built with the original intent, and after that intent has vanished, they then, there's houses that have rentals on them already because of that, and they're not really monitored. So it happens. So if you start to loosen that up like that, without, you know, following the guidelines as they already are, you're opening a challenge.
And I will, Mitch, I will definitely say to that end, every 10 years, when that commission sits and has to do a revision to the POCD, that commission does, you know, takes that responsibility very seriously. And the changes in the last POCD for the Town of Orange were dramatic, you know? I mean, the designation of specific areas for density, you know? Again, we're a community that lacks the infrastructure to support the density that really these laws, these laws are pushing. And ultimately, what's going to happen is, you're going to have to put sewers in your town, you know? And you're going to have to put a paid fire department in your town, because the density would become so great, and then, you know, the tax structure of the town would completely change. So, and if that's ultimately what they decide at some point, so be it.
But there are provisions currently that they work with, Carol Martin's project being one of those, the Firelight project being one of those...
That's an example...
Fieldstone being one of those. They're varied. Some are not cheap, some are, some are age-restricted, some aren't, behind the transfer station, that project down there. So they are working with it.
And that Carol, Carol's project is a great example of the POCD and the changes to the POCD, the designation of spots along the Post Road where there's access to sanitary sewers. And there are other spots that, if you look at the POCD, they're there. So if anyone ever says the zoning commission isn't, just rest assured they have. And every 10 years, they do, as they are legally required to do. And when a potential project comes forward, they come in. And, you know, so...
All right.
Yes, I would recommend adoption.
Okay. So let's start with number five, is to consider an... So let's start with number five is to consider an act on opting out of provisions as I stated earlier. Is there a motion to be made on that one?
So moved.
Attorney Corangelo?
Second.
Okay. We've had much discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? Item number six was to consider an act on opting out, opting out of provisions, connect general statutes concerning limitations on parking spaces for dwelling units in accordance with Public Act 21-29, subsection five.
So moved.
Number seven is to consider, oh, all in favor? Yeah. You all said it, I was like, yeah, okay. Number seven, to consider an act on opting out of the provision of general statute authorizing the installation of temporary healthcare structures in a residential zoning districts in accordance with section J of general statute, subsection eight dash one double B.
So moved.
Okay. All right. The town zoning and Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? The town zoning, for their reasons stated and the endorsed by the Board of Selectmen have opted out of these rules and will prefer to remain with the rules as prescribed by the Orange zoning regulations.
I would just ask Anne, once the minutes are ready, if you can give Jack a copy of the minutes, because I believe we have to send something to OPM.
Martin Hough gets more paperwork than anybody. Okay. This one is number eight, to consider an act on the request to approve a clock for installation at Town Hall. This is out on the grounds, to commemorate Orange's bicentennial. Mitch brought it to me. I had the paperwork sitting on my desk, so he was kind of surprised when I was in agreement with him on this one. The best example we can give easily, but not that vendor probably for reasons which Mitch and I both understand, the clock that's in front of Michael's Jewelers on the post road, that type of a pedestal clock, I'm going to call it, with a large face. There's a couple of options in here that have been provided. And we looked at an area that is, say, right diagonal from the corner of this building, beyond the flagpole, towards the corner, but on the inside by a bit of the sidewalk there, so that people coming up and down Orange Center Road would be seeing this. I'm sure that it would be set up in such a way that probably even the garden club would maintain around it as they do on the green with flowers seasonally. There's three. We started out actually with the Verden Company. Their person came in and then Mitch talked with a couple of other companies. I believe the third one is the one that's on the post road. Mitch and I didn't, that wasn't really our choice, quite honestly. The other two, Mitch had some concerns with the delivery time. We'd like it delivered, installed, preferably two weeks before the fair. So since the fair is the culmination of the bicentennial, that it would be here and installed before the third weekend of September 2022. The Verden Company, I think their paperwork is all provided in here. The difference with Tower Clock, they offer a thirty-six inch or forty-five inch face on that clock. It's double-faced. You see it heading north and south. There's faces on both sides of it. We kind of made some choices. You'll see here where it was superimposed with the bicentennial logo is going to be in the middle of the face of the clock. Mitch and I both thought the Roman numerals was the right way to go with it. Here it is, right there. It's superimposed where it would stand approximately. And Mitch, I'll let you speak to it also. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jim. Yes, Jim and I did meet. We agreed quicker on this than we did on a lot of things. There's a lot of decisions that come into this and we basically have provided you some quotes from three different vendors, basically providing the same clock for the most part. Maybe they all manufacture their own. There's going to be little variations on a theme. And I have spoken to all three of them. I have checked a number of references. For all of them, the references are fine. I have no doubt that any one of these would be sufficient for what we're looking for. My personal recommendation is to go with Tower Clocks for a couple of reasons. It is the low bidder. They've been very responsive. Like if I email them at eleven o'clock at night, seven o'clock the next morning, I have a response, all taken care of. They're all the same style. But I'm also concerned mostly about the lead time. To make that Labor Day weekend, let's say, I'm very concerned about Verden making that. Whereas Tower in electric time, I don't have any concerns. Tower also has a five-year warranty. The others have three. And then I think it comes down to really the only choice for this board at this point is, do you want Tower to give us a thirty-six inch clock, which is what the standard seems to be? Or for the same price, they're willing to give us a forty-five inch clock, which I believe the First Selectmen feels is too large. But there's renderings for you to look at that Tower supplied to us to show us just a rendering and the size difference and your thoughts. So I would like to, well, let me hold off and hear discussion of what people think.
And let me just explain why. We got a tremendous amount of wind here. This is a cast product. The thirty-six inch is pretty significant size. It's what's down on the post road and very visible. The forty-five inch is that much bigger. It's like a lollipop. And the larger face, larger head of it would still be mounted on the same size frame. And I just think that, you know, that could be just too large, especially with the winds we've been having just the other night. So I thought personally that the thirty-six inch was adequate. Whether it be Tower Clock or Verden, that I'm open on. There's only about a $2,500 difference between them. So that's negligible. We have the funds to pay for it. That's not a problem either. It will be done with, I believe, state funding on that. So again, for those of you at home, it is not your tax dollars. It is more, the government has thrown more money at us and we have this availability. So that was my only thought with it. They're about the same height. Their structure is about the same dimensionally. So the only difference is which vendor and the size of the face of the clock. I thought the thirty-six was adequate, but.
Let me just add one last thing, Jim. When Jim and I were discussing this, as most of you know, Judy and I both serve on the bicentennial committee, being in charge of the.
So is Anne.
So is Anne. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Anne. More than just there. And, you know, it was felt that when looking at this and thinking about it, we are doing a lot of different, you'll see a lot of different things that people can purchase and have as mementos from the bicentennial. But this will be a permanent structure. This will be a lasting memory of how the town celebrated its bicentennial. And I think it's, I'm thrilled that there's money available and I'm thrilled to bring this to you today for consideration.
Which one do you recommend?
I'm recommending the Tower Clocks. Whether you want, I would, I like the forty-five. Jim's giving you reasons for thirty-six, but the price is the same and whatever your thoughts are there, but I think it gives us the best bang for our dollar and the five-year warranty, Ralph, and the lead time will definitely have it here well in time for early September, if not before. We'll be ready to go. And there's some work, by the way, there's some work the town needs to do on this too. We're going to need, and Jim and I have discussed this, we're going to need to install a concrete pad. We're going to need to bring the electricity that's already out there that illuminates the flagpole. We need to bring electricity underneath and work with their specifications, any of these. They're all the same in that respect. And then they will install it and we felt comfortable with paying somebody else to install this because it's their product and they'll know how to do it right.
They provide the template. We hire the mason and electrician, run the conduit, comes up in the middle, they provide the template, lay it out, pour the cement, put the mason, whoever we hire, puts the pins in, then when the clock company comes, air it us.
Good, good. I think it's a great idea. I know driving around in Ireland and stuff and it seems like every town has their clock tower and it was just so much fun driving and seeing the different towers and it just made it like a special designation, like this is our town, so to speak. And I really do, I think it's going to be a great idea and it's a perfect location out there. So with that being said, I make a motion that I think we go with the Tower Clocks, thirty-six inch. I agree, because I think the forty-five will be with our winds a little too crazy. Thirty-six inch face and with our logo on it.
Logo will be on it.
Perfect.
I will second that and I'll ask Jim for a, I mean, the quote is twenty-three four. I would ask for a 10% contingency on top of that. Should we do that now?
I would say it will be, I would put a not to exceed on it of 30,000.
Fine. Judy, you okay with that?
We have the funding and if we don't spend it, it goes back into the fund.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how much the electrician.
Right.
The trenching.
Right.
We may be able to do some of that ourselves.
Right.
You know, so you might as well just leave yourself enough room.
Right. I'd like to see a plaque on that as well, commemorating the event.
Yeah.
Very good.
With that said, what Judy's motion is with Tower Clock, thirty-six inch, with a not to exceed of 30,000. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's keep it moving here before the other two come back. I did, trust me, I did. Okay, we have a very short list this year, this month. Number nine, to consider an act on request to approve tax refunds totaling $4,125.44.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
This last one, there's no action to be taken at this time. I've been chasing this for about two years and I had to wait for, I kept being told that UI was coming out with a program and UI finally came out with a program the second. UI and Eversource came out with this program where they pay 20%, or no, twenty thousand, up to $20,000 of the location and installation of it. And they cost less than that to do, so they've assured us that 20,000 is more than enough for any one location. And up to 50% of the cost of the equipment. One charging station is two wires. We all call it a pump, but it's not. It's electric and so it would conserve as two cars at once. Also, something that's very important with this is we're looking at card swipe units. The town of Orange would not be providing the electricity for free. You may have an electric car. You want to go there and charge, you swipe your card and it charges your, it's approved and it charges your card. We're looking at locations here at the Town Hall parking lot, the rear of the library parking lot, and two locations, the front parking lot at the community center and the rear lot back by the pool. They were going to look to see if it would be better to go by the big green electric box by the fairgrounds or up against the pool building, but, so we, the money has been out there, so I jumped on it right away, once it was made known. And the management has been here and they brought their layout engineer here last week and they're working on this. And then it will come back to us once they've done all their determinations for us to act on it, to proceed under contract to install these. I think that, I don't know if everybody will own an electric vehicle someday, but I think a large percentage will. And, you know, the governor had a program and he gave out some grants for traffic signalization efficiencies and charging station efficiencies and all. It was questioned whether I had, why didn't I jump on that program? I didn't jump on that program because I was already working with a program that pays for the installation, development and installation of the location and 50% of the cost of the equipment. So that's why I put this before you, mostly tonight, just as an FYI, as something that I've been working on and now it's coming to fruition. These are also available for business property owners with the same funding. So Anne Marie Sliby sat in on the meeting and Attorney Marino sat in on the meeting just in case there were any questions or loops that I would not understand. And I think it all went relatively well and Anne Marie is putting it out there for some of the businesses. Not too many of our businesses at this time have these charging stations in their locations. The biggest user of it is down at Trader Joe's has them. I don't know how many others do, but I think the Town Hall, the library and community center are the right places to start. It's possible, if this works out, we can look at the four schools for another location. We may look at Public Works. We may look at the police station. You know, there's many, many possibilities, but I thought the three places that get the most use from us as a town were under my authority. I didn't go to the Board of Education with it. So all it is for tonight is an FYI. If anybody has any questions about it, I think between myself and Vincent, we can answer it. Don't have to, professional service.
Couple of quick questions if I can, Jim. Thank you very much for bringing us to our attention. I think it's a great thing that we can go forward with hopefully soon. When we do go forward though, we're actually going to have a proposal with the spots and the costs and all that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I was a little confused. We have a letterhead with Artis Energy and then about four pages and I got a letterhead with ChargePoint. Is it one in the same?
ChargePoint is the equipment.
Okay.
ChargePoint is the equipment. Artis is the professional services. They're the engineers and designers and contact that arrange all of, we do not pay them $1. Their fees are all attained through this grant program from the energy providers.
You should also, you should also let them know for, if you're thinking like bid, public bid process and everything, that you're limited to the vendors that they say. There's a list of vendors and a list of equipment.
Right.
Under the grant program. So this was UI recommended, right?
This was the UI recommended one through Ted.
Yeah, no, there was.
We also met with Ted Novicki and his person first. I forgot that, yeah.
Because as I think I mentioned to you before, at the CCM convention, there were several.
Oh, yeah.
Of these vendors all of a sudden pushing this.
Well, that's because they all knew that this funding was coming.
Coming down the line. So, but this is, I don't have any preference because I don't know any of these people really, except who I met. But I mean, this, you're saying Artis Energy is somebody's working directly with UI?
With UI.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
As we're doing this, are we considering the infrastructure for future growth in case this is really successful in the.
Yes.
Spots that were already.
They, actually, that was one of the questions I think both of us asked. Like say we put one pump.
Right.
Charging unit out here. They would, as doing it, set it up so that you could tee in.
Just run four more.
To another conduit, put in a base and put another one up right next to it.
Okay.
Or, well, you know, spaced over since there's two cars on one charging station. But yeah, absolutely.
Good.
And there's constraints. Certain things have to have two and some are allowed one. I'm looking at mostly two units so that that would be four wires. You could do potentially up to four cars at a time. And I'm also looking at it that it's a pay to play.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the town of Orange is not going to be providing for free. That would be like me then having to provide for your car at the Shell Station, you know?
That would be great, especially today.
Wouldn't it be?
At least tell me what time you guys are going to be there.
So, and I think, I think it's a great thing. I mean, I think people are used to that. See? Plug in.
Yep.
And go. And they've got it pretty well adapted now so that everybody is going to be universal. And I asked about Tesla. And I asked about Tesla. They're the only one with a different plug, and there's an adapter that comes with your Tesla that then makes it universal also. But it comes with their car. We don't have it. It's not like it's hanging on a little shelf on this charging unit, because you know how long that would stay there. Somebody'd throw it right in their car. So it's something that I've wanted for a couple of years, and I've been bird-dogging it, and finally it's happening, and I think it's kind of a...
Elon may put them in, too, for us. Elon.
After you get some with them.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and if, for those of you who've been wanting to do this at home but waiting for someone else to pay for it, you could...
Can you hear my phone, please?
Oh, yes. You, the program extends to homes, so go online and read about it. I mean, you could potentially get one of these at your house if that's your interest.
Yeah, and you don't have to have a swipe at home.
Well, you can't.
But, hey...
You can't.
There's a business I know here in town that doesn't pay us any taxes, and they have a charging station or two in their lot, and it's also a swipe to charge. But one entity owns the property. Then there's a business, and their credit card is through their business. So they're actually paying themselves, kind of thing. So there's...
Creative.
You know, if you're an accountant or somebody like that, there's ways to do everything. But anyhow, so that's what that was all about. I wanted you to be aware of it. If you see people out there and you hear people talk about it, you now know what I've been working on as far as that. With that said, Pension Board.
We met last month, and a couple of things. We are going, we're going out on the bids that we talked about, reviewing the 457 plans and the management of those. And then as far as the pension goes, we're still in good shape, but it's been a rough quarter, as you may know. We were down somewhat, but still holding steady, and we've got a very solid pension plan. And this year's budget will include full, the Board of Finances is recommending through John Sifarelli, the full actuary determined recommendation of our actuaries to continue funding the pension fully.
There you go.
Probably a good time to fund it, too.
Yeah.
If that's a good year.
Capital planning. Anything, Ralph, or you done? I wasn't quite sure.
We're done.
Okay.
We're on a board finance.
Okay. That was it. Okay, with that said, it is 8:38, something like that. Is there a motion?
Good job.
Motion made. All in favor? Yep, we have to take our picture.